...to order at 6:03 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, Councilmember CEO, Dylan, Girbaugh, Mitchell, and Mayor Protem Tahr. Councilwoman McClellan texted me and the city manager, or the city manager and I, whatever, earlier today and indicated that she'll be absent from the work meeting and will probably be arriving late for the regular meeting. From city staff, we have City Manager Campo, Clerk Royal, Administrative Assistant Getzmann, City Attorney Smith, and City Attorney Labor Counsel Steve Gerard. We have other members of city staff in the audience this evening as well. The rest of you who are present, if you've been so kind to sign it in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the work meeting as submitted or amended, if there are amendments.
Sold.
As submitted, Ms. Dylan?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahr. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. If you'd please come forward to the podium, we would appreciate that. Any citizen comments? No citizen comments. Then we'll proceed to the discussion portion of this evening's work agenda, and we are here to talk about employee contracts, employee appointments, evaluations, as well as severance pay. So this is a multi-dimensional, complex discussion that Mr. Girbaugh, and of course, Ms. Tahr, and I believe Ms. Dylan will recall, we have discussed on numerous occasions in the past, we're unable to develop consensus, but perhaps this year, we will be able to. So Ms. Mitchell and Mr. CEO, I'm sure you're aware of a number of these issues, but they have been talked about and debated and vetted for some time. But we thought it was appropriate to sit down as a group and then also to be joined by legal counsel, in particular, Steve Gerard, who's our labor attorney, who does an excellent job with us to weigh the options, to review what has been discussed in the past, and then to thoughtfully consider a way to move forward and potentially develop consensus. I do want to note for the record, because Councilwoman McClellan is absent this evening and because she hasn't had an opportunity to have a substantive discussion of this topic, excuse me, I don't know that we'll be able to develop consensus tonight, because I want to get her opinion and I want her to have the opportunity to sit down with staff and be briefed on this matter. So it will likely reappear on a future work meeting agenda or as a discussion item at an upcoming council meeting. In addition to a copy of the minutes from May 4th, 2015, you also have a memo from, or you should have received a memo, from Scott Smith's office dated April 13th, 2015. You have a copy of ordinance number 769, and a memorandum from Clark Hill, from Steve Gerard, Nicole Patterson, dated April the 14th, 2015, a copy of rules of conduct and how we define an at-will employee, and then finally, there is a personnel review regarding how other municipalities of similar size and demographics deal with issues relating to employment, severance, evaluation, appointments, et cetera. Does everyone have those documents, received those in their packets that were delivered on Thursday? Excellent, okay. Mr. Campo, do you have anything that you'd like to add at this time?
I don't think so. We all except that, again, the reason we provided these items was that, especially for those that hadn't been, had not been here for previous discussions, but also to maybe kind of shake the cobwebs out for those that had been, but it could have been a couple years ago. Now, it could be a five further on discussion topic for the one that we're here on, so I wanted to just to add that information and then the discussion and kind of figure out what the council wants to...
Let's, thank you, Mr. Campo. Let's do this. Steve, I'm going to start with you. If you want to provide a little bit of context and background as to what was discussed and what your office shared when we last visited this issue, which would have been in the spring of 2015, you may want to touch on to your opinion and what you, what you know other municipalities do relating to some of these issues. Subsequent to your comments, I'll ask Mr. Smith if he has anything that he'd like to add, and then we'll work our way around the table and entertain any questions and concerns that council members have. Does that sound good to you?
That would be an excellent process.
Okay. Then the floor is yours, and I would remind our legal team as well as council members to please be sure to speak into the microphones, because we are recording this, and I believe actually, we're streaming this work meeting live.
Oh, wonderful. All right. Let's walk back in history. There was a time when I didn't work for the city of Celine, and I was very happy to come aboard and work with Scott Smith back in the day when we both were at Clark Hill to, yes, it seemed like not that far, you know, that is it. And one of the things that struck me initially as I was addressing various issues that came up was I was asked to review contracts for a number of city positions, and of course, I asked, why? Why are we having one-year contracts for these city positions? How did that come up? And I was advised that indeed, that had been the progress or the practice here for many years, that we had annual one-year contracts, and those were redone on a year-to-year basis. And a second issue that also was of concern to me, because it was not something that I had seen in many years of working with municipalities, was in these contracts, it contained a six-month severance provision, which was extremely generous under the circumstances. And it was six months, whether you'd been here for one year or whether you'd been here for 20 years, it really didn't matter. It was six months of severance pay. So I made a few comments at the time to Todd, which I believe he will recall, that, you know, if you ever get an opportunity to review this, this is something I think that in the long run is probably not in the best interest of the city. So we did have an opportunity to review that. Fast forward to April of 2015, and at that point in time, I'd already had an opportunity to work through at least one round of your union contracts when this issue came up. And I'd had a number of discussions with Mr. Smith about this same issue, and I think he felt similarly. He's worked with more municipalities than I certainly have, but this is a relatively unique, I'm not going to say solely unique, but it's a relatively unique approach to labor relations with your non-union employees, was to basically keep them out there hanging every year with a one-year contract, not knowing whether that contract would be renewed the next year or not. So, and again, the severance provision was something that was, I think, way more than the city might want to pay in a particular situation. Severance provisions are, in my experience, done on a case-by-case basis, depending on the individual, depending on the circumstances of the separation from employment, and are certainly not a routine matter, of course, at least certainly not that kind of one. They're typically negotiated with high-level officials in municipalities, in my experience, typically city managers, and are not something that's done typically with a whole range of city employees that they had. So my suggestion at the time was a review of, and the other, of course, problem with having contracts that are with the city council is that each and every time you want to terminate those individuals, at least some of them, you have to go to the full city council to do that in a full-blown meeting, which can be extremely publicly embarrassing and sometimes a type of spectacle that most of you would probably prefer to avoid. So I made some recommendations. We talked about not only making revisions to the contract itself, but also to your employee handbook in order to incorporate the provisions that we wanted to change to the contract, to put in certainly that in Michigan, all employees are at-will employees, unless you have a contract to the contrary. So we wanted to make sure that the contract, the employee handbook was consistent with what we would be doing in the new contracts. You know, my role I see here is protecting the city, the municipality, from, you know, potential claims, and also trying to limit your liability in the event that happens. And to me, and automatically having six months of severance pay regardless of when you leave, if you've been here a year, two years, or 20 years, it seems to me ridiculous. Again, severance pay to me is something that is negotiated separately. A certain amount of base severance pay is certainly not out of the question, but certainly, that's a thing that's typically negotiated, and if it's already called for, then you certainly can't get a severance agreement and a release for something that somebody's already entitled to. There's no consideration for that. So I think there's a lot of good reasons to make the change. We proposed that back in 2015. There was a lot of discussion about it, and I don't think that there was ultimately consensus on that. So I'm back here again, two years later, to essentially make the same proposal that we discussed back then.
Steve, it didn't mention this to you when you and I and Mr. Campo spoke by phone late last week, but I'm sure you're aware of this. One of the other issues that came up recently, in fact, this past June, related to, relating to, excuse me, staff appointments, was also, also had to do with compensation, particularly merit and, I think it was, I was actually absent from that meeting, so was it steps and merit, excuse me?
Oh, yes. Steps and merit issue.
Can you talk a little bit about that and, you know, in your experience, one, what do other municipalities do relating to that? In your professional legal opinion, is there a way to change or modify our policy and approach which may ultimately prove more beneficial? That's another component of this...
Let's talk about what you have, so everybody understands, because I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding, in my opinion, in the past about what exactly the staff have here. And correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, if I get names mixed up. But we have, just like union contracts have, we have a scale, and employees move up the scale until they reach the top of their scale. It depends on how different steps in the union contracts, and we have a certain number of steps, and I think it takes, is it close to 10 years, Todd, before you get the steps? 10 years to get to the top or 10 steps?
Thanks.
And then, once you get to the top of your step, you no longer get any automatic increases that would come from having steps. You might get increases if there isn't across-the-board increase to the entire scale, but typically, you're not given another increase like you would when you're in the steps. But at that point in time, we have another program, which is, you call it merit, it's really a sort of longevity-type payment. And longevity is what I'm used to seeing in most, I'd say 90% of my municipalities that have some sort of additional payment. And longevity payments frankly have been being reduced over the years. Longevity payments were originally created because you had to recruit people to stay in public service, because the salaries certainly were not, back in the day, competitive with what they were in the private sector. And so this was viewed as a, as an incentive to stay employed. The longer you stayed, you would get a longevity payment for doing nothing other than breathing and essentially being employed for a certain number of years. And you've got a big payment. You don't see that in the private sector. Any of you who work in the private sector, when have you ever just gone in and your employer said, here you go, you've been here 20 years, here's $2,000? It just, it doesn't exist, but it's very common in the public sector. But over the years, those have, as private sector rates have become much more competitive with public, or public has become much more competitive with private sector rates, you've seen the longevity payments cut back and back and completely eliminated in some municipalities. So that's something that, and certainly in the union negotiation session, which is what I typically do, you've seen a lot of negotiations where we've reduced, frozen, and/or eliminated longevity steps. Your longevity program here is more than just longevity. There is a component of merit to it, and there's an analysis that can be done, and the discretion is left to the city manager to make a determination based on merit whether somebody actually gets their merit step. And I think the practice has been that everybody gets them. Again, I could be wrong. Todd, is that correct? Okay. So to the extent that we've had discretion in them, we haven't really acted on that discretion, and Todd can talk about that, because he's the one who has to make that decision, and we simply have paid them. And again, that's, if you look at our union contracts, our union contracts have a longevity payment as well. So what we're doing with staff is similar. The payment is different, the amount is different, but, you know, we have the same similar type of situation. So the question is, you know, and that's not in the, that's not something that's in the contracts that we're talking about, it's something that's been in the employee handbook for quite some time, is that a practice that you want to continue? Is that something that is a benefit or a program that's of value to the city and/or the employees? Or is that something that, you know, could be changed? And, you know, we can certainly debate back and forth on whether or not you think the program is a good one or not.
Anything else you'd like to add this time, Steve?
Oh, I think that's about it.
Scott, anything you'd like to add?
Steve covered it.
Excellent, okay.
I'm going to be...
Mr. Campo, anything that you'd like to add at this time?
I don't know.
All right. Let's start with questions, although I do want to just state this for the record, because ultimately, this is what I'm going to be asking for, is consensus and council members' thoughts on really three matters, as it stands currently. One is how we pursue severance payments in the future. One, whether we continue our annual appointment of non-union staff positions. And three, if we make any changes regarding steps and/or merit pay. So just keep those in mind. I'm happy to entertain questions that you have for either Mr. Gerard, Mr. Smith, or Mr. Campo. I would state first, and then I'll begin with you, Mayor Protem, if you're all right with this, is I believe council's, council's attention and focus on the specific issue of severance payments to laid-off employees has actually been a matter that has been discussed infrequently but on and off again since I first got on council in January of 2008. In fact, I'm struggling to identify another issue that's been talked about for that protracted period of time. And my position has actually never changed, which is that I think what we currently offer is excessive, and I'm inclined to change it. I think my position mirrors the thoughts and opinions that you articulated, Mr. Gerard. Second, in regards to staff appointments, I think that our policy and approach is a bit antiquated and cumbersome. So I would also be amenable to changing that. As it relates to merit and steps, I'm really not inclined to spend political capital charging up that hill. I would be fine with keeping it as it is. I do think, however, noting what Mr. Campo just shared, which is generally, our approach has been to just give one, or give merit to employees, then I think we need to scrap the terminology merit. For just giving it to people based on their years of service, it's not, it's not merit. It's longevity. And I think we just need to be honest with ourselves. So those are some opinions. They were not meant to influence you in any way. I'm genuinely interested in your questions, and so I will begin with you, Mayor Protem Tahr.
Yes, please be sure to speak into my...
Am I asking questions or giving opinions, or both?
Well, don't you, if you have, we'll start with questions, but, you know, you were elected for your subjectivity, so feel free to share opinions as well.
All right, okay. So just, I'm quite sure I know the answer to this, but just to make absolutely sure. So the, what we call merit now becomes part of base salary and continues on as the basis for next year, and if merit comes again, it's added again?
No.
No, it's a one-time?
Yeah.
It's one-time?
Well, it's one-time, but it's each year, but it's added to the base each year. It doesn't pile on top of each other like a...
Okay.
Across-the-board wage increase would.
Okay. All right. So it's a one-time? Okay, okay, good. So then, yes, since the first time I heard about the severance issue from Mr. Gerard in 2015, I guess was the first discussion of this, I agree with, I have agreed with the point of view that the mayor just articulated, that it's, it seems excessive. Well, it's out of line with common practice, and I don't think it's in the best interest of the city. I would hope that if we did away with the current, the current approach, that we would have a system with some flexibility for negotiation and the possibility of severance pay, but the case-by-case basis that you talked about. I think putting staff on the point of view, on the point about annual appointments, I think putting staff through the annual torture of being reappointed is excessive as well, and that, and that we should have longer contracts. And merit, having worked in a system where there were annual performance reviews and merit pay could happen on the basis of extraordinary or special contributions, we don't necessarily have that right now. If someone has done an extraordinary job, we don't have a way to reward that except by giving the merit pay that everyone gets. So I'm wondering if there is, to make the situation more complicated, if we might consider having some additional, some actual, some, like, pardon the expression, some real merit pay as opposed to longevity, a longevity bonus that we call merit? That's it for now.
Thank you. Very interesting. Ms. Dylan?
Most of my comments will echo what Mr. Tahr just said. I definitely am in favor of removing the word merit, because if we are giving merit increases before evaluations are done, I do not see that as merit pay, and especially if everyone is getting across-the-board similar amount. Longevity is longevity. I think we could revisit that issue as to how it's structured. And Todd, can people skip steps?
The quick answer is yes. Again, depending if it's happened before, we're bringing somebody on and as an enticement to bring them on, you skip X amount of steps, instead of beginning them at step one, maybe you start them at step two or three. Also, during my time here, when we've done some reorganization and moved some positions around and added some duties and that type of thing, we've, we've made that change. We've said we've increased, increased it that way as well, so it can happen.
I was just trying to, tagging on to what Mr. Tahr said about actually giving merit, would we be able to skip steps? Would that be an incentive, or is it better to have it as a separate line item bonus type?
Well, I guess I would prefer the merit, just because it's not affecting your base rate of pay. And so, and the other thing I would respectfully add too is that just because everybody gets their merit pay, it's almost the assumption that could be, that could come across from this discussion, is that they don't deserve it, but they're getting it anyway. But what I would say is that if they didn't deserve it, they wouldn't be getting all of it or part of it. So those are things that we, while, and we talked a little bit about this at the council meeting, about the evaluation, yes, I do annual evaluations of my department heads in July, but I, I mean, it's an ongoing thing, right? So I'm not going to wait for the annual, if something comes up in January, I'm not going to wait until July to address it. I'm going to address it right then and there, and then similarly to any non-union employee. If we're having troubles with, with an employee, with their performance, that is going to be reflected in whether or not, I'm just telling you how my mind thinks, just so, when it comes to the merit pay. So I do believe we've got a very strong team, and that's, that's why I've continued on that practice of my predecessor.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move off of that then, and then I'm going to, about the severance payments, it doesn't seem, based on, you know, the chart that you gave us, that it's a best practice for most communities similarly situated to be doing the severance like that we are doing right now. And, you know, I've raised this point before, and I am definitely in favor of revisiting the severance issue. And as far as the annual appointments of staff, it's cumbersome, I would think, to do annuals. Figuring out a better system for it, I think is definitely something we should look at. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Girbaugh?
Yeah. As everyone knows, I was on when we adopted this step process, and it was sold in many different ways. My concern has always been all the components that are part of the compensation. And so we've had, and correct me if I'm wrong in this, we've always had a CPI factor that we've applied at times. We've then had steps, we've then had longevity, and then we've also had merit. So when you start looking at those components, you're getting some very significant increases annually, especially if you're giving someone a step every single year. My understanding, as the city manager had mentioned, was that steps were to identify as you, similar to like a promotion or whatever, as you acquired new skills and so forth, you could move forward. We've always, depending on where you're hired and put into the system, could advantage the individual or disadvantage an individual because of where they were placed. And my concern is that some of those were automatically just given every year, and as you said, you know, one every year. That doesn't necessarily make sense when you're trying to talk about merit and then merit on top of that. So what you're basically creating, when I look at this, is an automatic salary increase without any kind of really consideration, except for that little bit that you might have as merit. And it becomes very expensive of a program when you start looking at it from that perspective. When I look at what a lot of organizations are averaging, those type of increases that go from above a 5% or even get close to a 10% are considered extremely high and have been for the last 25 years.
Very much so.
And that's where I see less of an incentive-type salary program versus one that becomes more automatic. And just trying to understand how we would address that differently is one of my concerns and has been, is just understanding that I see individuals that may be undervalued and individuals that are overvalued, and how that's corrected in the process. In some cases, we're held to a limitation. We either need to move them up to another step or level, or, as you said, we do a longevity type thing, but it doesn't necessarily incentivize people that get stuck in that position. The other...
Mr. Girbaugh, can I jump in real quick?
Sure.
I appreciate those thoughts, yes, thank you. I just want to make sure that I understand. Would you recommend then maybe foregoing longevity and looking at an implementation of a genuine merit? I mean, it's not, it's not a bonus, I guess, but additional A-based merit?
Well, and then in connection somehow, we've got to figure out how we handle it with the CPI and the, and steps.
Okay.
Because we're, when you apply a CPI, and Ms. Tahr knows, and I'm using my own word examples, we generally would have a merit program, and within that, determine what would be kind of a merit increase, would be a CPI or cost of living increase, and then reward above and beyond that. In this situation, we automatically assign a CPI, and then a longevity, and then we do the step, and it's a very, it's a very good program, and we've experienced that. And I think that's the thing where I keep, not to discourage rewarding our staff, but not to necessarily, I want to discourage that it's a reasonable one within the type of confines that we have, and recognize those who are doing it.
I think just to point out, we have had, since I've been here, I believe we've had some freezes in both steps and in the across-the-board CPI. I think when, when things were difficult, there may have been one or more years where there was 0% across.
At least two.
At least two, okay. But your general comments are...
Right. And even when we have those situations, you don't necessarily want to have the next year where you've doubled up and increased it. So it's trying to make sure that what you accomplished in... So it's trying to make sure that what you accomplished in one year sort of moves forward unless there's some circumstances in which you have to retain employees. Looking at this approach, as we remove the contracts, it makes council less, I guess, would be less in control, as some people would see it. How does this affect our charter? Is there anything in terms of the way we're moving forward that would change our charter?
Now, we conceived a way to do this without affecting the charter. What Celine does with the annual contracts approved by council is really unique, especially for all the employees. In most communities, the managers on a contract, sometimes the police chief and sometimes the clerk, and beyond that, the manager usually enters into the contracts and hires and fires the other administrative team members. And there are a lot of good reasons for that. You hold the administrative team accountable through the manager rather than their individual contracts. Even where there are individual contracts, they're usually not annual contracts. Most often, they're indefinite contracts and they serve at will, but on an indefinite basis. So you don't have an annual yearly renewal and the public kind of spectacle that you get. And part of the reason for that is that it really undermines the city manager because you're telling the city manager to control the administrative staff, but the administrative staff is accountable to you for their salaries. And so you're really encouraging, you could be encouraging the staff council to have inappropriate communications and relations, relationships directly rather than working through the manager as is envisioned in a council-manager form of government. And you're telling the manager to manage the staff, but he doesn't have the ultimate decision-making ability when it comes to what they're going to be paid the next year or even whether they're rehired the next year. So you're sending kind of some mixed messages at the same time. And in some ways, it also encourages a council to exceed its role. And I might not be popular by saying this, but one of the things now that I got this gray hair that's also falling out that I get to do on occasion is go around to various councils and commissions and try to help them understand their roles and responsibilities, even those that aren't my clients. And it encourages a council or could tempt a council to exceed its role because your role isn't to be involved in day-to-day operations or to oversee the administrative staff. And because you're faced with the specter of making this decision every year, you're going to be tempted to want to get in to some of that review that's really outside or beyond your boundaries. So I'm not saying that's happened in this case. I'm just saying the way the structure is set up, it's fraught with potential mines. It's a bit of a minefield. So I would suggest that you redo it. And we came up with an ordinance that essentially combines all of those offices into the office of city manager and then has him appoint the department heads rather than those officers, per se. So that's the way we're working around the charter.
So we're really basically advancing more responsibility and expectation upon the city manager and then our responsibility would be to hold that city manager accountable for those expectations.
That's correct. And I think that's really the way the council-manager form of government is supposed to work. And I can provide you background information on that. I've done a fair amount of reading and study on that, as you can imagine.
And I think we've shifted, and we have, we've shifted more towards that approach because of the type of council and things. In the past, when people were more available, I think there was more involvement and stuff. And I do know what kind of hiccups can happen when you don't have that type of situation and actually-
Especially as city government gets more and more and more complex.
Right, right. And then also the issue is we just need to be more information. The other one, question I was wondering about was when we talked about a two-week severance, I think it was mentioned in here, how would you work a situation where, from my own and how I've handled some other things, understanding how people have separated from an organization, how do we adjust that for longevity and those type of things? So say somebody's 20, 25 years and there's an issue and we've written in here that it's only two weeks severance. Are we saying that we have the option of doing either?
No, I believe it's not limited to two weeks. I think there's flexibility to go beyond that in individual situations if the circumstance warrant and it's signed by the city manager.
That's where-
Because there are situations, as you all know, as you just referred to, where you want that ability under a particular situation to be able to make that offer of some severance that might be greater than two weeks, could be greater than six months or it could be less than six months. But the one-size-fits-all six months just doesn't really make any sense.
Okay. And I didn't want to necessarily, as we transition this over with, we have employees and such feel that, oh, man, I've just gotten screwed out of any potential settlement if I needed or anything came up or something like that. And that's good to know.
I think in my experience, the way that's usually handled is it depends entirely on the circumstances. So there are some circumstances where you've decided that you're going to have a reduction in force, you're going to combine some offices, you're going to do some other kinds of things. That may get handled in one way. If you're doing it because of concerns about performance, honesty or other kinds of things, it can be handled in a variety of different ways depending on the circumstances and not only of the city, but the employee relative risk that are being weighed.
Good. Because that's where my concern was, that when you have people that, you know, have been here, so if you have a 30-day layoff notice and if you've been here so many more years, you'd have a 90-day layoff or something like that, so that type of situation. And then the other thing about the six months, I'm strong about this issue, making sure it stays with the police chief and the city manager because those are the issues. Generally, you're going to eliminate somebody like that, but I do at times think about six months being almost, again, you get back to that point of negotiating based on how long their longevity is. So if we might look more at the longevity with a maximum being six months.
So, Mr. Gerbough, just so that I understand, you would be inclined to limit severance compensation to just the city manager and police chief?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only other one I would think maybe is treasurer, but at this point, I think we've got enough where we, the ones that we're going to hold accountable for the most responsibility is the police chief and, or are the police chief and the city manager, so.
Okay.
And I know in the past, that's come up as a potential issue, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Seale?
For me, the easy one is the contract issue. And I agree, I think that's antiquated and needs to be updated and I think we need to get away from annual approval of contracts for all the staff. I think we need to probably evaluate the city manager on an annual basis. Not that we're necessarily going to redo his contract every year, but I guess as a practical manner, we are in terms of kind of evaluation we get. Looking at the wages and the consumer price index, my belief is that the consumer price and I got to, I got to say this at the outset too. I speak not only as a past union representative in police unions for many, many years with the Teamsters and some very strong union positions, but also as a, as an at-will staff member here for the city of Celine in the past. So just to put that all on the table, so, and it certainly has probably colored my view of the issues. But insofar as consumer price index raises for the overall compensation package, I think that's done as an attempt to keep the wages current so that the city of Celine has the ability to attract competent people when there is an opening in the position and on the pay scale without having to make a special wage adjustment for a particular person in a particular position at the point we need to hire somebody. So maybe there's a better way to do it than an automatic CPI every year. Maybe we need to have a review of our wage scale as compared to other cities' wage scales every few years instead of just the automatic CPI. But I think some component of a CPI is necessary for the city to be competitive. Now, I'm also a taxpayer and a citizen in this community and I'm very concerned that we have a competent staff and as a city council member as well. And we need to be able to attract competent people to work the positions. Insofar as severance goes, I again was a potential benefactor of a very generous severance package. That was one of the things that attracted me to come to this city. But in reviewing the comparables you've, somebody has laid out for us here, I'm kind of attracted to the situation that Mylan has where much like perhaps you're saying, Mr. Gerbough, over time, you earn more potential severance. So if you've been here 10 years, your severance could potentially be different than a person who's only been here one year. And all you folks have talked about negotiating those kinds of things. The thing that I've seen from my experience in the past is that the worse a person is and the more the agency wants to get rid of them, the more severance pay they throw on the table, the better they are.
I look at it as the more potential problems that they can develop that we are solving by making it.
I'm just-
I could see how you could look at it differently.
And I reflect back too, one time, when my annual contract was up for review, there was a clause in the contract that says you can come in, I think it was 60 days in advance of the expiration of the contract and negotiate the subsequent contract with the city manager. So I went to the then-city manager, certainly not Mr. Campell, I've got to say that, and said, I made an appointment and went in and said, I'm here to negotiate my upcoming contract. And that then-city manager laughed and said, what do you mean negotiate? Sign it or leave. That was the negotiation. So I, to some extent, the staff people, I think, are at a bit of a disadvantage from the union people in that they don't have the same strength when it comes on a one-on-one relationship for their job. The other thing is if the city is going to terminate a position because of reorganization or some economic need or whatever through no fault of the employees, timing can be everything. I mean, if you're a chief of police or if you're a city engineer or something, you can't just readily go out and find another city engineer's job. You might have to wait six months, a year before another position is available somewhere else in a reasonable area, close to your home, so you wouldn't have to totally relocate to another state. So I think that having a longer severance than just a two-week severance or leaving it open-ended to a negotiation, an unstated negotiation, but perhaps a formula like Mylan has, that would be most attractive to me because then it gives some credence to the amount of time you've worked in the position, the amount of time you've devoted to the city. The other thing I need to point out, and I believe it's true, is that if you're dismissing a staff member for cause, this severance does not come into play. I think it says that right in their contract.
Yep, that is correct.
So it's only if you're dismissed at will. So it's kind of an insurance policy in a way too. And I think that maybe the insurance policy we have is perhaps too generous, but I think it needs to be more than just a two-week severance. I like the one that gives credence to the amount of seniority that a person has.
I want to stay on severance for just a second with you, Mr. Seale. Mr. Gerbough expressed his opinion that he would limit severance to the city manager's position and the police chief's position. Who do you believe is entitled to severance? Do you have a thought on that?
I think all the staff people that are under these contracts, whoever they come to be.
Every at-will employee?
Correct.
Let me, I may have misstated that. I was referring to the ones that for sure we had to have six months.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Right, I missed it. I wanted something like what Mylan has.
Okay. So still would provide the option for any at-will employee to get some severance compensation? Okay, I apologize, Mr. Gerbough. Thank you. Did you have anything further, Mr. Seale? No, okay. Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. I wanted to just clarify with Mr. Garard.
Yes.
One of the notes I wrote down while you were speaking is that when you were talking about scale, employees move up on that scale until they reach the top and then after that point, they no longer have steps. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So what would be helpful here is that paperwork from June because I feel like there were steps for employees that had been here longer. And so that's information that-
No, my understanding is there's a certain-
You don't think so.
We have a scale where you have steps. I believe there's 10 steps.
Uh-huh.
And when you hit those steps, oh, excuse me, nine steps, nine. There's nine.
What, 10?
Yes.
Or 12.
Metric, metric system.
My understanding is there are nine steps.
Okay.
And when you reach the top of that scale, you no longer get a step. There's no step to go to. However, you can, if we do a across-the-board wage increase, it's been referred to as CPI. It's not always identical to CPI, some types a little more, some types a little less, but it's meant to protect from, you know, inflation and keeping wages current and in the market. Then that's the only time they would get an increase in their across, in their wage scale because otherwise there's just the longevity payments.
I see. And it could be that, you know, this being my first year, that some of the language that I was looking at on that document was confusing, but-
I know what document you're talking about.
Okay.
And it was extremely confusing.
Just saying, just saying is all. So as far as severance pay, I circled Mylan's also. And I think that I'm a big fan of, A, doing what we're already doing and have that spelled out in our contracts and in our language. And also I believe in our city manager, any city manager's discretion for a lot of this. I was startled as a newcomer to see the issue of yearly contracts and pay come across our desk. I think, you know, we hire a city manager and it's that person's job. I don't know why we're involved with that. So I would happily shove that off our plate. I would be in favor of reviewing the city manager's salary because that's our job. We're building an accountability there. Severance, annual appointment, changes in steps and merit pay. I would like to have something that's similar to CPI. And I would also like a merit pay that is truly a merit pay. And I would like the timing to be after performance reviews. That's what I would like to see. Trying to think, did I cover everything?
Maybe Mr. Seale thinks you did not. I'll never find out.
Well, not you necessarily, but one other thought occurred to me that I was going to express and I didn't. And that is to ask Mr. Campell, if I'm not mistaken, is there not a provision in the contract that says if you don't achieve a certain level of excellence in your performance review, you're not eligible for the annual bonus or whatever?
The longevity?
Longevity, yeah.
Well, it says that this essentially gives the authority to the city manager, the discretion to award none, all, or part.
Okay. Because I always thought, when I was an employee here, that that merit pay wasn't automatic, that in fact I had to achieve a certain level of performance in order to qualify for that merit pay, even once, I mean, once I was off the steps and eligible for merit.
Let me just make one other observation too. You know, you've talked about CPI and that's nice. In the private sector, it's not used very much. And in the last several years, in most private sector jobs, you're not seeing raises at all because healthcare costs are going up so much that you can't afford to also increase salary when healthcare costs are going up at double-digit rates. So part of the analysis that you may wish to undertake is to look at total cost of-
The whole package.
Of the whole package. So it may be healthcare costs, it may be pension benefit increases or retirement plan increases, it may be other kinds of things in addition to CPI, merit and step increases.
And I just also am conscious that we do want to be an attractive workplace. We do, we do want to offer and stand out in a small way, maybe not as much as our six-month automatic severance pay, but I am conscious of that. And I just want our city manager to have the autonomy to make those decisions.
Any other questions at this time?
Any other questions at this time? Can I actually start with Ms. Harrow and then go to Ms. Del?
Yeah, just to go back to the merit idea. So, my suggestion, which I, that we think about having something I called real merit, the kind of thing I was thinking of when I talked about that was something extraordinary. And sometimes that's, you know, it can be circumstances. There is a particular huge challenge that comes to some department's way over the course of the year, and the manager performs, or other staff perform, really, really rise to the occasion, that we don't have a way of singling out that kind of thing. And it wouldn't necessarily even be something that would happen every year. So just to clarify a little bit further what I had in mind. Thanks.
I like that, real merit. That's good. Ms. Del?
I just have a question for Mr. Campell, which is, what is the frequency that we're actually, that we have engaged a severance clause?
Since I've been here?
Yes.
Once.
Okay.
But it applied to, that would have been my first year on council, so the spring of 2009, and we provided severance compensations to four individuals.
I'm sorry, I guess that would be two, yeah, I'm sorry. For the, I was thinking.
For the fine circuit.
Yeah. So that's, actually, it would be twice, because the four that we had, unfortunately, because of the world falling apart financially and budget constraints, we had, we laid out four people. There were actually two union members and two non-union. And the two non-union received the severance pay. And then we had a third one a few years ago. 2012?
So we've had three incidents in 10 years?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You touched on an interesting point, which is, during my tenure as a council member and as mayor, we spent a lot of time on this issue that ultimately has had an impact on less than a handful of employees in a decade. But. It's such a function of a policymaking body.
Mr. Gearball?
That's true. I mean, it is, when you start looking at the, we just had such good staff, apparently, that we did need to put those in place. Just looking at your adjustments, I guess this would be to the employee's manual, I think?
I think that was proposed changes to the.
Yeah, rules of conduct, and at-will and so forth. Are there any major additions in here that are different than what we currently have? I was just interested, because when I'm looking at some of the issues that are.
Yeah, the changes are highlighted.
Engaging outside employment and such.
Yeah, the new policy statement on severance pay was new, that would be, that would be the proposal, if we went with the two-week severance pay language. You know, the at-will language is beefed up slightly, but other than that, no. And the at-will employment, which is our current at-will employment language, there was, there was a clause about exceptions to the policy only valid in writing and signed by the employee and the city manager. You don't want anybody to be made from at-will employee to just cause by the careless comments of a few folks who has to be in writing. The, I was saying with the change in the rules of conduct. So no, there aren't any huge changes to these, other than severance pay, which is just clean. I'm going to make sure at-will is very clear.
Thanks. Okay, that's just my clarification.
Any other questions from the group? All right, let me take a stab at a few of these things. I was taking notes during the discussion. I'm up next.
It was actually a very good discussion. I appreciate everyone's thoughts and questions. First, on the issue of severance, and I would ask that my council members object or interject if I get something wrong. But it seems to me that there was broad consensus that, for lack of a better way to articulate it, our current policy of providing six-month severance is a bit excessive. And it sounds like people are comfortable, for the most part, in terms of what Mr. Gerard had proposed in the spring of 2015, but we also like the approach that was used by Mylan, or is used by Mylan, which is expressed on this personnel review from August 7, 2017. Is that, is that correct? Does that seem like a reasonable synopsis of what was discussed and what the consensus is? So Steve, do you want to take maybe another stab at what you did in 2015?
Making my notes right now.
Okay, very good. You know, as it relates to employee compensation, cost of living, steps, what we currently define as merit, I think this came up actually by the last three questioners, so Mr. Gearball, Mr. Seal, and then finally, Ms. Mitchell. I think before we develop consensus on how to move forward, and before we determine if any changes are necessary, I do think it would be valuable to look at, first, it started off as a wage scale analysis, but as you mentioned, Steve, we're really looking at more, or maybe it was Scott, we're looking at more than just wages. We're looking at compensation in its totality, and what other municipalities similar in size and demographics to Celine do. So I think that information would be valuable. Now, as it relates to staff appointments, I didn't hear anyone advocate that we maintain the status quo in its totality. I think that the group determined that annual appointments is a bit cumbersome and antiquated. Now, Mr. Smith expressed an opinion, well, why don't you express your opinion again, if you don't mind? You were talking about transitioning from an annual appointment of all at-will employees to annual appointment of the city manager, and then allowing that position.
I think what I was suggesting is, all the appointments ought to be indefinite, but they serve at the pleasure of the council, the manager and police chief, and then the other administrative department heads would serve at the pleasure of the manager, but it would be an indefinite appointment. So they could be terminated at any time, for any reason, no reason, and so forth, but there wouldn't be the annual review. Oftentimes, what cities do is discuss at budget time what they're looking for in terms of cost of living increases and other kinds of things, include a factor in the budget to accommodate that, and then allow the city manager the discretion to make merit increases or other increases as the city manager deems appropriate. And at that point, when you're looking at the budget, you're also looking at other factors like insurance costs and that sort of thing. And that's one way that other communities do that, is with a budgetary discussion and a line item in the budget.
So, I apologize if I'm being obtuse. Help me out here. So we transition and implement a policy where the city council no longer appoints all at-will employees once a year for a one-year contract. We transition to indefinite contracts. Those individuals serve at the pleasure and the discretion of the city manager. Does that system still allow for, how does that system, or what do other municipalities who have a policy similar to that, how do they deal and how do they manage the hiring and vetting of candidates for department head positions?
They leave that to the city manager to do, and the city manager may or may not involve council, depending on the particular department and sensitivity.
Okay.
At the time. So, you know, police chiefs, fire chiefs are oftentimes heavily vetted kinds of positions. There may be other positions that, because of particular concerns, may be vetted at a particular time, too. I've seen city clerks with that kind of vetting and others. Again, it depends on the circumstances.
And just so you know, what Mr. Smith has proposed is typically what I see in most of my municipalities.
Sure.
The indeterminate, you know, ending, it's not necessarily a contract, you're there, you know, you have an employee handbook that provides for their term that's indefinite, but it's at-will. And you no longer need a single contract. Now, you can have individual contracts with certain individuals, if the council still deems that, for example, the city manager is frequently one that is treated differently, maybe the police chief, but certainly that is, that is more typical than we're used to seeing.
Well, let me say this, not to muddy the water, but as I prefaced at the beginning of tonight's meeting, this is, of course, a multi-dimensional and complex discussion about the manner in which we treat our employees and how we compensate them, specifically our at-will employees. And the city manager and I have had this discussion, and I have to say, I believe that in my capacity as mayor, I do a pretty good job of delineating between policy and operations, and not getting involved in operations. That's why we have, that's why we have staff. And while I agree that our current approach of appointing at-will employees annually is a bit dated and antiquated, I also feel pretty strongly that I don't want to lose all of the discretion and authority we have, especially related to those department heads. Now, that may be, that opinion might not be shared by anybody else on council, I might be an outlier. But I really, truly believe that attracting, nurturing, and ultimately appointing the right people to serve as department heads is, that's a really strategic decision. And if you get competent managers, if you get people who have a vision, I think that, you know, they can do a lot with their positions. And I think that there's a role that council should play, and should be invested in that. I may be an outlier, and of course, Mr. Smith made some very valid points that I can't disagree with in terms of doing something a bit, a bit different. But that's my thought on that matter. Let's, yeah, let's go around the table. Let's start on the opposite side, Ms. Mitchell, and then Mr. Seal, and we'll end at Mr. Harrow.
So I must, with all respect, disagree vehemently with your honor, because I think some of the push-pull dynamics that Mr. Smith discussed, as far as creating tension between department heads and manager and city council, you know, we hire a city manager for a reason, and I think that we have a chance to review department heads through the performance of the city manager. And if there is an issue, then we bring it up with the city manager. I would be very uncomfortable having anything operationally to do with department heads personally. I look forward to hearing my council thoughts. I want to raise one thought. During this compensation analysis that we're performing, we have data that women are traditionally underpaid compared to men, and so I would like that issue to be addressed, so that as we're looking at other comparable demographics, other comparable sizes and budgets, that we are also looking at pay scale in a more granular level for gender, to just, let's make sure that we're solving that problem.
I've thought mine until you brought up the gender issue.
Sorry.
No, that was very interesting. I'm glad you did. It's going to take me a moment to collect my wits here. Oh, I don't know what it was. Perhaps we could write a policy such that council had some say or some, some appointment authority at the initial hiring of a department head, but not necessarily in an annual review, or an contract renewal, or anything like that. Once they're on board, the city manager's issue to deal with, if there's any dealing.
There are some models like that, in dealing with one in another community, in which I'm city attorney, where council confirms the appointments of department heads.
Yeah. I think in the city of Ann Arbor, the council confirmed the appointment of department heads, or at least some of them. But it was at the discretion of the city manager. It was done with the advice and consent, I guess, at council.
Mr. Seal stole my thunder, but I agree with the mayor, too. I think that we have that one appointment process at that point where we have our one word of say if we feel uncomfortable or something, or whatever. But then after that, it's the city manager's person, and then he'll have to deal with them. It's his selection. So, a recommendation by the city manager, and then council has its ability to approve it or not approve it. You never know what could happen as a result of that negotiations, if it's a high salary or something, and we don't agree with it, that could.
So, Mr. Gearball, not unlike then how a member of the planning commission is appointed, the mayor has the authority to appoint the person, the city council can say yea or nay.
Right, right.
And limit that just to department heads?
Yeah, I don't, we don't need to go any farther than that. I think it still kind of preserves what we've always done in the past, but then we don't get involved in any potential dismissal or whatever of that issue.
Ms. Del?
Okay, I'll be really quick. I agree with what has been said by the mayor and by Mr. Gearball.
I, I would not like to see city council interfering in the city manager's operational management of the city. So, any participation city council had in appointments of department heads, I wouldn't want to go beyond advice and consent.
Taking a lot of notes tonight, Steve.
I am. That's what I do.
Yeah.
I can even almost read them sometimes, too.
One I don't have.
Yeah. Well, I guess the probably the most important question to ask this evening is to you, Mr. Gerard. Seems like we developed some soft consensus on a number of points. Do you feel like you have some direction and know what needs to be done next? Obviously, this information's going to need to come back to us for review and discussion. And as I said at the onset of tonight's meeting, we want to make sure that our council colleague, Heidi McClellan, has the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Campell and go over what was discussed tonight, and of course, share her thoughts and observations as well.
I feel like I have some really good ideas of the direction that the council would love to go on. What you number is, items number one and two, the six-month severance pay and the appointment in the one-year contract. I feel like I'm not 100% sure on where you're looking at going on the merit versus the longevity versus.
And I think personally, and my colleagues can object, I think it would be improper to develop consensus on that point tonight, prior to receiving an employment compensation analysis of several other municipalities.
And I understand where you're at, which is that we don't have a consensus on that.
Correct.
Then I understand.
Mr. Gearball, please.
And then, and possibly if there's other models of compensation that you've seen held in other cities. We always need to have something to compare against to see, determine whether or not ours is better or worse.
That's a good point. So it's not only the data, but also what are some of the best practices that you know exist out there from other clients and municipalities you've worked with? Yep, I'm going to make sure you get the microphone, but the floor is yours.
So, I'm aware that I was somewhat in the minority about department heads, and while we're all in the room, I want to understand better. I find that I learn more from people that have some disagreement with me. So, how would that work? So we recently had a hiring process where, you know, we had a resume, we had an introduction, and we formalized the hiring of that person. And our city manager recommended the hire. What information do you think you might have in making that appointment and standing up, or saying nay? What would you do in that situation? What scenario could you see where you're turning down a recommended appointment by the city manager? I'm asking because I'm new at this, and I welcome feedback.
Do you want to take a stab at that first, Mr. Gearball? You want me to? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I think in our last hire, there was potential concerns about conflicts of interest, conflicts of commitment, those type of things, which should be all vetted and everything, but at least it gives us a chance to ask those questions. For myself, I felt a little more comfortable from that type of thing, just because of the situation and the circumstances. I know we do most of that, but it's always good, in the public perspective, to always have something of that nature, specifically if it's a department head-type position.
I, well, go ahead, Mr. Gearball, I'm sorry to cut you off. I would add that today, in 2017, if, for instance, God forbid, Director Scruggs announced her resignation or retirement, and was leaving, and we had a policy in place where the city manager could vet and interview candidates and make a recommendation. I have the utmost faith and trust in Mr. Campell's judgment and ability. So if he recommended a candidate, I probably. So if he recommended a candidate, I probably, more than nine times out of 10, I would agree and trust his judgment. But of course, I'm also cognizant of the fact that he won't always be the city manager. And we have to think about situations that may arise 10, 15, 20 years down the road. Additionally, you know, as it relates to the Parks and Rec director's position or the treasures position, as I emphasized earlier, I'll take the treasures position, for example, dealing with the budget, dealing with business recruitment and attraction and financial strategies and managing our liability, financial liabilities, those are profoundly important things that have a direct, direct impact on our community's quality of life. And I want to make sure that who's ever serving in that position is well-vetted and scrutinized and prepared to lead on day one. So I would like the opportunity to provide some feedback and some thoughts on that, on something like that. Sorry if that was convoluted and less than articulate, but Mr. Seal?
One of the things that strikes me is that, especially for some of us with gray hair who've been around the block for a while, we might have some professional connections. Say somebody had been developed as a potential candidate for whatever position, and we knew somebody in the state of California that knew this person from some previous association and knew some important bit of information that didn't normally come up through Mercer Group or some other hiring consortium that would have recommended it, and calls one of us at home and says, hey, Jack, you know, because I know you, I think you need to know that this candidate you folks are considering has this going on or that going on. And I'm sure I wouldn't let, if that happened, I wouldn't let it wait long enough to get to the council floor. I would certainly talk to Mr. Campbell in advance. But some of those kinds of things, I think, develop, too, kind of off the record, where, and it probably would only happen one out of 1,000 times, but there's the potential for that, as well. So I think it's important that council has some ability to have some input.
Gentlemen, anything else you'd like to add this time? No, Mr. Campbell, anything you'd like to add?
So some of you may recall, too, per the ordinance, not in the charter, but in the ordinance, it says for deputies, that it's a, currently the ordinance says to hire a deputy for a department, that it's a recommendation from the city manager and the department head to council for confirmation. So not to muddy the water, but since we're looking at this whole picture, we probably ought to look at that as well.
I hope so. Again, in case there was any ambiguity to my position and my recommendation, I'm focused in on the city manager and the department heads. That's what I'd like some say and discretion over. I am very comfortable relinquishing any authority that we currently have to empower our department heads and city manager to assemble the teams that they think will benefit their particular department, and then, of course, the city as a whole. It was a very good discussion. And you'll connect with Ms. McClellan, sit down with her, and thoroughly go over what was discussed tonight, and address any questions concerned that she may have. If you have any additional thoughts between now and when we revisit this issue, please direct them to the city manager's office. Steve, just one last question for you, or I guess for staff. Any idea on how long you anticipate it taking to compile some data relating to employment compensation in other municipalities, and maybe cleaning up some of the documents that you prepared in 2015?
I serve your pleasure. Tell me when you want that done, and we'll get it done.
Well, I would like to...
What's that? Oh, yeah, MML will have a lot of...
Yeah, I mean, do you, is it reasonable to assume that we could revisit this issue no later than our second meeting in September? Okay, all right. Let's plan on that, then. Anything else from city council? Thank you all. Then the chair would entertain, oh, yes, Ms. Dillon.
Just because we had a little bit of an issue about this today, just for clarification now, are we supposed to be following up a time prior to getting information back?
If you have questions between now and when we revisit this issue about any of the items that we discussed, please, at any time...
But it will be coming back still as a discussion item?
Oh, yes, yes.
Just clarifying. Thank you.
Anything else? Then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at, let's say, 7:21 PM. Moved by Giribon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Meeting is adjourned.